Do anyway, yeah.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm afraid to get a, a, a scale like that job. Afraid I'd stand on it and it would order flowers for me.
Hundred and twenty. Well, you'd be a hundred and twenty years old. It's funny, my mother, my mother would go out and drink with my brother at a bar and have a beer. And somebody came up to her and said, oh, man, and, and she used to my mother when I'm on the lake. Now, my mother's ninety years old. And so my brother said, well, you must look, look like you did back then. And so my mother says to me, now, you know, I looked like I was ninety back then. She spun the whole thing. Oh, you are what you are. My mother started counting once she got to ninety, she started going backwards.
Yeah, I hear you. So, so we're about to roll over here in, 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 in just a minute, uh, just to give folks a heads up.
Yep.
And I, I'm gonna pull up my last document to get ready. And are, are you keeping track of, uh, the noses? Okay.
Sam.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Mary. All set.
Welcome.
Long live Mary.
So we need Jana and Casey. That's it.
Okay, we're gonna wait another minute or perhaps two. I, I, I will say to, say to folks, it really was interesting this morning to have, you know, one, one set of conversations going on in one ear and a different set of conversations in the other ear. I know I looked confused, but in this particular case, it's because I really was confused.
I was gonna ask you about it, but I know you're gonna report on it. So the other ear, the other ear's conversation.
Yeah.
You'll give us feedback in the meeting.
Yeah. And, and, and I still have one more of those to do, so I will roll out. Well, it's not only a, a, a bud in each ear, it's two different devices. Uh, one, one device in one ear and the other was in the other ear. So it was interesting.
Well, when this meeting is over, go get another kind of bud.
So, uh, unfortunately, I have a, I have two meetings this evening, uh, too, so.
I'll have a bud in between then.
Yeah.
All the more reason.
Well, with you, Mr. Chair, being able to multitask that way, if you were to get on John's scale today, you would probably be put down as an eighteen-year-old teenager who's very good at multitasking.
Yeah, trust, trust me, it's not gonna say eighteen-year-old teenager, so.
That's, that's sucking up to the chair.
You know, the, the, the psychological assessment of, of that scale may still have me at eighteen years old, but, uh, so, well, I see that Casey's, uh, joining us, so. So I think, once Casey is up and running here, I think we're gonna go, Mary. So are we, are we set?
Yes.
Okay, uh, then, uh, I will, uh, uh, I will say at one oh three, we will bring, uh, this meeting, uh, to order, uh, of the State Board of Education, um, on February tenth, uh, twenty ten. Uh, welcome, uh, to everyone, uh, who is, uh, who is joining us today. I, uh, have a preliminary statement to read, that the, uh, the, the State Board of, of, of Education, uh, is conducting this meeting in accordance with section G dash one, one MRSA, section four oh three dash A, entitled Public Proceedings Through Remote Access During Declaration of State of Emergency During COVID nineteen. Whereas the meeting is open to the public, all votes will be taken by roll call. Pardon me. And, um, I would, uh, uh, proceed by asking the Secretary to call the roll.
Wilson Hess.
Here.
Jane Sexton.
Here.
Wendy Alt.
Here.
John Byrd.
Here.
Fern DeJardins.
Here.
Peter Geiger.
Here.
Casey Matic.
Here.
And I have not seen Jana come on or Martha, but I think Martha had a one o'clock.
Okay, that's correct. Uh, the board declares that a quorum is present. Thank you very much, uh, for being here, and we do expect to be joined shortly by two of our other members. And, uh, uh, Casey, uh, our, our good friend Grayson was, was in attendance, uh, this morning, uh, with the legislature, but I do not believe I see him this afternoon. So I'm gonna ask you to double up and read, uh, or maybe it's triple up, and read the vision statement for the board, please.
Sure thing. The vision of the State Board is to ensure main public school students graduate with the skills, knowledge, and principles of responsible American citizens, self-directed, and dedicated to making contributions to society by pursuing further education and employment.
Thank you so, so very much, uh, Casey. And, uh, please, uh, all of us reflect, uh, on, on that mission as we go about our work. Uh, and, and Casey, we're gonna conspire because, uh, uh, Grayson should be, uh, confirmed for our March meeting. So we're gonna conspire to be sure he, he does his turn next, next time. I, I see she's not rising to take the bait, she's a smart lady. The next order, order of business, uh, is, uh, to review the, the minutes of the last meeting. Uh, the minutes have been distributed, uh, for your, uh, review. I call the attention to everyone that there was, uh, a, uh, a, uh, a, a version that was shared with us as early as I think it was this morning, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, is that right, Mary?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so that's, that's the version that we have before us. Uh, the Chair would entertain a, a motion and then.
I move their acceptance.
Moved acceptance by John Byrd.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't see the version this morning, so what's, what is the change?
Well, let's, let's get a motion on the table and then, then we'll review that.
Then I'll second. I'll second.
We'll, we'll, we'll give, we'll give it to Jane, that's okay. Thank you. Uh, and, uh, so when I ask for additions, deletions, uh, uh, or comments, uh, the first comment goes to Peter, and he says he did not see the version this morning. And so could we give him just a quick highlight, uh, on the changes? Mary, help us with that?
Wendy?
Yes.
Do you mind doing that?
Sure. No, I don't mind. Um, so, um, in the copy that I had received this morning, you'll see there are red highlighted sections which, um, uh, indicate the changes. So I don't know, Peter, if you have a, a copy, but you'll see on page five, wording was removed, um, in, uh, the fourth paragraph from the bottom. It was discussing the charter cap and the commission. Then on the top of page six, uh, because it was stated in the, in the next paragraph, it was removed when the next Professional Standards Board, uh, meeting would take place at the end of the first paragraph, because it was already stated. Um, then on page eight, down near the bottom with the paragraph starting with Wilson Hess, the CTE allocation was added in to the end of that sentence so that it was clear what FYI was, twenty twenty-one was. And then on page nine, um, Fern, I hope it's okay. I took a like great license, um, to just end the sentence about President Hull doing an extraordinary job, uh, as the president of NASB, and I, I suggested removing and is overseeing so many good things, um, as they weren't specified. So that's was my suggestion. So, Mary, I think those are the changes that.
Yes.
Oh, so any, any comments? I see Fern's reaction, any comments on the proposed suggestions? Then without objection, uh, I would order that those be incorporated. Are there any other comments, additions, deletions, uh, to the minutes? We have a motion on the floor, all those in favor? Uh, roll call, please, Mary.
Wilson Hess.
Aye.
Jane Sexton.
Yes.
Wendy Alt.
Yes.
John Byrd.
Yes.
Fern DeJardins.
Yes.
Peter Geiger.
Yes.
Uh, the vote is unanimous among all those, um, present and voting, uh, the motion is carried, the minutes are approved. Thank you all. The next section of our agenda is, is public comment. The, uh, the State Board of Education welcomes public comment on, on any topics, uh, that are in any way related, uh, to its charge in business. During this part of the meeting, uh, we give, uh, members of the public the opportunity, uh, to make such, uh, comments, uh, by our rule. Those comments are limited to three minutes each. We make note, uh, to folks who are interested in making public comments, this is not a time that we engage in discussion or debate. The board's asked to respectfully listen to the comments. We do not, uh, typically respond, uh, to the comments. Uh, we listen carefully and take note of, uh, of, of, uh, any comments that are made. There may be people, uh, that have interest, uh, in, uh, business that will come before the board, uh, based on its public, uh, agenda or, uh, in discussions. We do not entertain, uh, such comments at that time. This is the time to make pu- comments on anything that may be coming for the board. We do allow, uh, in certain proceedings, uh, to have members of the public, uh, that have, uh, been involved in a particular, uh, process that's before us, especially it's, uh, related, uh, to ongoing projects, uh, to be invited to speak. But no, no one should, uh, assume, uh, such an invitation will be issued if it's not been issued in advance. Are there any members of the public, uh, who would like to speak, uh, to the board at this time? Hearing none. We'll proceed, I'd like to welcome, uh, Board Member General Appoint, uh, Jana, thank you for being here with us. We appreciate it very much. We will now proceed to reports of officers. Uh, the Chair, uh, will, uh, report, uh, this morning. Uh, while many of you were in work session, uh, I was mostly engaged in listening and speaking, uh, to the Education and Cultural Affairs Committee of the State Board, excuse me, of, of the Legislature, um, and in particular, related to three nominations, uh, to the State Board, the Honorable Victoria Cornfield, um, Cynthia Beliveau, uh, and Grayson Orne, were all considered, uh, each gave testimony, uh, in turn, gave brief testimony on behalf of the State Board, for each of them, uh, all were approved, uh, and have been recommended, uh, to the Senate for confirmation. Tori and Cynthia will be replacing, uh, two, uh, of, of our board members, General Appoint, uh, and Jane Sexton. At this particular time of the meeting, I wanna thank, uh, Jane and Jana both for their extraordinary service, uh, to the board. And, uh, will, I think, all take the opportunity towards the conclusion of this meeting, uh, to share our sentiments with, uh, with Jane and Jana as well. But I wanted to go on the record at the beginning of the meeting, uh, that we, uh, express our thanks, uh, to them. Uh, the business before the board in terms of actions, uh, today, Career and Technical Education Committee, uh, will, uh, offer the quarterly report, uh, for the Carl Perkins Funds, uh, that, uh, we will consider, uh, for, uh, submission to the US Department of Education. Uh, the School Construction Committee, uh, will offer, uh, uh, an action related to Project One of the Integrated Consolidated School Construction Program. Nominations and Elections Committee, uh, will bring forward, I believe, a nomination for an interim Vice Chair for the period through June thirtieth, um, twenty twenty-one, uh, to replace, uh, an outgoing member, Jane Sexton. And, uh, we will consider, uh, a, a, an appointment to, to the Charter Commission, uh, one of our three State Board Representatives. General Appoint, uh, will be leaving us, and, uh, we wanna be sure we have ongoing representation with the Charter, uh, School Commission. Uh, I'll just note, uh, several brief things, uh, they, they weren't brief things, I'll note several things, uh, briefly, that have transpired since our last meeting that I would be sure everyone's aware of. With the pending, uh, vacancy, in, um, the Vice Chair position, uh, I have appointed, uh, the Election and Nominations Committee in accordance, uh, with their, um, Rules and Procedures Manual. And, um, the members of that committee are Wendy Alt, Chair, John Byrd, uh, and myself. I, uh, I, I also have appointed, uh, the Student Membership Committee, uh, the time, uh, of the year is here, where we seek nominations, uh, for student membership. Can you hard, can you believe, Casey, uh, that we're looking for your successor? My house, how the time has flown. And, uh, and, and that committee is, uh, is, is Wendy Alt, Fern DeJardin, uh, and Casey Matic. Uh, and they have, I, they'll, they'll report, they're already working. I, uh, I, I also note, uh, just very briefly, uh, there's some DOE transitions. Karen Kuziak, uh, who's been liaison to our, uh, Legislative Action Committee, has been replaced by J.C. Holmes. Uh, J.C. Holmes, uh, in turn, uh, has given up her slot on, uh, on MEPRY. Uh, and, uh, another DOE staff member will be doing that, and I suspect there'll be some other chairs that are reshuffled by the time we meet again, um, in, in March. And, uh, in the interest of, uh, time, I will conclude my report, thank you. Turn to the report of the Vice Chair.
Thank you, Wilson. Wanted, uh, again, kind of like Jana, uh, I'm not gonna hold them up because the water will flow where I doesn't, don't want it to, but thank everyone for the beautiful bouquet. I have appreciated the, uh, working relationships for the board and, uh, friendships that have developed. Uh, the members of the Department of Hit of Education are very hardworking professionals and have become, uh, well-acquainted with some of them. Uh, one thing on the board that I will not miss is all the discussions on student transfers that hopefully that will move somewhere other than on the board agenda at some point, but, uh, the state, uh, is not quite, uh, ready to change that. Uh, a little history, my, uh, public service started a long, long time ago with the Saco River Corridor Commission that kind of hit on my interest in the environment. And, um, I, I have enjoyed the education that I've gotten being on the State Board of Education. This morning, my husband asked what next, and I don't know what opportunity will come next, but hopefully something interesting. And the other new aspect is that, uh, I'm being an ambassador at Sugarloaf and again, enjoying meeting people. For the board work in the last month, uh, construction meeting, um, again, Martha has, uh, led that committee well, and on the Legislative Action, uh, Peter has led that committee well. And, uh, John Byrd is doing a great deal of, uh, very enthusiastic sporting of CTE. So, uh, thank you for my, uh, duration here, learning and meeting people and learning more about education. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jane. And, uh, you know, I just wanna take this opportunity to say it's been a, uh, a, a pleasure, an honor and privilege to, to work with you over, uh, my six years on the board, uh, and especially during our term together with, uh, Chair and Vice Chair. I'm gonna put that down because it appears that I may have just spoken, uh, in someone else's testimony before the Education and Cultural Affairs Committee. So my apologies for that. And, um, getting back on the agenda, we now turn to reports of standing committees. And, uh, we proceed with school construction.
Well, I think I'll, if, if Martha's not here, I'll, I'll take that one. The Construction Committee met, um, January twenty-ninth. The primary focus of the meeting was to review the Valley Unified, um, Educational Service Center project. At our October fourteenth, two thousand twenty meeting, we agreed to send a joint letter with the Commissioner of the DOE to the three districts, uh, asking for a written plan, evidence that the three districts are in agreement and, and established a December thirty-first, two thousand twenty deadline for such a plan. We will later in this meeting discuss that matter. So that basically our, we met, and that was our consideration time, and we will have a, uh, an action motion later in this meeting.
Thank you, Peter. Any questions for, for Peter or, or further comments from members of the committee? Then we'll proceed to Certification in Higher Education, Wendy.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. As you all are aware and heard this morning, uh, the Certification in Higher Ed Committee has, um, been engrossed in discussions of Chapter one fifteen, joined, um, at most meetings by Peter Geiger and Wilson Hess. And we will continue to do that, we have two meetings scheduled. The next is Tuesday, Feb- February twenty-third, and then we will dedicate the regular monthly meeting on Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, to Chapter one fifteen. And our, uh, big hairy audacious goal is to present it to you at the March, uh, State Board Meeting. So thank you, Jana, and thank you, Fern, uh, for, um, carving out time to do this. And in addition, I know that Casey will so ably represent, uh, me on the Student Voice, uh, Committee, and I'm pleased to serve on the Student Membership, uh, Committee with Fern and Casey, and you'll hear about that later.
Thank you very much. Questions for Wendy or comments for members of the committee? Hearing none. Career and Technical Education, John Byrd. And let's try it with the mic on.
Thank you. Is that better?
Yes, much.
We had our, uh, January, end of January meeting, and, uh, I will be making a motion about the, the Perkins, uh, report, uh, later in the meeting as, as, uh, Wilson's already indicated. The agenda items we focused on primarily were a spirited discussion of around one fifteen. Yeah, Wendy wanted to, uh, get input from the representatives of the CTE world who attend our regular meetings. We usually have five or six people there who are in the field, and, uh, that was, I think, a productive discussion. Wendy, you said it was at the time, I hope you still feel it was. And, uh, uh, and then we received a report, uh, from, uh, Patricia Hart, uh, Hart Consulting, uh, in Educate Maine, who had, uh, done a, uh, an evaluation, assessment of the pilot pro- projects for grades nine and ten. Jana mentioned something about that this morning during the workshop time. And, uh, that has been, as it turns out, the report reflected, uh, uh, I think considerable success, especially when you consider the challenges of doing all of this during a pandemic. And of course, as a result of the pandemic, we had to delay the report until the end of the calendar year. It was originally due at the start of the school year, the, the end of the last school year, but everything is, was in a cock tat, of course, this year. So, uh, in terms of highlights of the report, uh, just to give you some indication of the, of the, uh, scope of it, uh, now if I can just find it. Oh, here it is. Yeah, so there were, the, the, the projects that were undertaken were throughout the state. Good geographic reach, uh, we had Augusta, uh, the Tech Center in Augusta, in Caribou, Naples, Lewiston, Rockland, my hometown, Norway, Mexico, Frenchville, and Bangor. So that's a, that's, that's a pretty good spread. And, uh, nine hundred, uh, just under a, a thousand students were involved in those projects aggregate. And, uh, uh, and a lot of good work was, uh, was, uh, accomplished. Uh, there were some challenges and some things that didn't get done because of those challenges. But, uh, uh, and, and anybody is welcome to look at the, at the report. I think the committee members all have copies, and, uh, I'll just, uh, Mary, ask you to send them out to the other members of the board so they can see, uh, Pat's report. But basically, uh, we, we felt it was a, a positive report. Uh, and we had intended to go on with a year or two of projects, but because of the pandemic and the need to look at other priorities for the CTE world, we, we simply asked the CTE people to say, what, what do you need? And of course, they need more resources, uh, for a, a variety of things they're trying to accomplish. And, and we've already discussed that in previous meetings, so, so about, uh, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars was diverted, uh, to, uh, to help with other priorities. The only other significant item in the meeting was, uh, a report from MACD. We still, uh, have to get the final report for their grant. Their money comes from the Perkins, uh, from the, uh, Briggs Funds, uh, and we'll get a report, uh, on the distribution of those, a final report, uh, next month. But, uh, they gave us an oral report at our meeting. I think we felt that, uh, that was very helpful and, uh, and positive. Uh, Dave Keaton will be the new Executive Director for MACD, replacing Don Canaan, who retired last summer. Uh, Dave will not take over officially until this coming summer, but, uh, but he is already designated and was at our meeting. Uh, and we're delighted that he will be taking over. And I think, unless somebody else on the committee wants to add anything, I think that's pretty much it.
The members of the committee? Questions, uh, from board members of the committee on the report? Hearing none. Thank you, John, and Membership Committee, uh, for your report. We'll proceed, uh, to the report of the Nomination and Elections Committee. And, uh, by virtue of her seniority, Wendy Alt, uh, was appointed as Chair. Thank you, Wendy, for serving in that capacity.
Wilson, you skipped.
For asking me. Thank you for that.
Are you skipping the Legislative Committee?
Yeah.
Apparently I am. Let's, let's step back. The other earbud, let, let the report from the Legislative Action Committee, and, and, and Wendy will be kind enough to defer, I hope.
Okay, well.
Thank you, ma'am.
Legislative Action Committee met on February fifth. We had a preliminary list of thirty LRs, which are legislative requests, essentially placeholders, we, for which we have direct interest and identify them by committee. We also have added eight initiatives that will address Maine's broadband needs, which affect mainly schools, students, but also businesses. Much of the work of the, um, Ed Committee has been dealing with orientations and confirmations by many of the boards. As mentioned before, Karen Kuziak has been our departmental eyes and ears, and it will now be J.C. Holmes, for which, uh, we thank Karen, welcome J.C. And as, um, the LRs become LDs, Legislative Documents, we will review the contents and make decisions relative to testimony. There's, I think, 16 CTE bills or LRs right now that will probably be condensed. But I won't go over the various ones. We're, we're just in the initial stages of looking at the, at the bills and getting a better understanding of what they're about. And then the Legislative Action Committee will help to make a decision about if we're going to testify or who might be testifying at each of these, at these, each of these hearings. So that's basically what we discussed last, on February 5th, I think it was. Anybody want to add anything else to that?
And any general questions? Again, my apologies, Peter. I'm suffering from two earbud syndrome here. Thank you very much. And this, this, this Legislative Action stuff is heating up as, as we speak, so. Now, Wendy, thank you for being so gracious. Could we hear from you on behalf of nomination and election?
Sure. I was honored that the Chair would appoint me to this committee as the Chair. And we did have a meeting. I presume that I don't talk about the meeting now, or do I?
You're, you're more than welcome to talk about the meeting now and let us know if you have a motion that you'd like to bring forward.
Okay, so you want the motion now?
So that would, that would be great.
Okay. Well, we met and we discussed the need to have another State Board member serve as the Vice Chair as Jane is stepping down from the board. And so after quite a lengthy discussion, we, we agreed to put forward Peter Geiger's name as the interim Vice Chair. And so I would accept a motion from, I guess it should be someone from the nominating committee.
A move.
Okay, and a second?
A second.
Okay. So now I.
And if, and if, and if I may, Madam Chair, just so everyone understands, our, our rules and procedures manual provides that the, the nomination election committee conduct this part of the meeting so that folks understand that. So thank, thank you, Wendy. Proceed.
So we have a motion. We have a second. So I should direct Mary Becker to, or is there discussion? Is there any discussion? Then Mary, if you would be so kind as to call the roll.
Wilson Hess.
Hi.
Jane Sexton.
Yes.
Wendy Alt.
Yes.
John Bird.
Yes.
Tom Disjodds.
Yes.
Peter Geiger.
Yes.
Arthur Harris. Jana LaPointe.
Yes.
The vote being unanimous among those present and voting, the motion carries. Peter will, will take office upon the vacancy. And the vacancy will be determined upon confirmation of, in the Senate, of the successor of the current Vice Chair. We will inform the board at the date in which that happens. Congratulations, Peter. Yay.
Congratulations, yes.
Any, any speeches?
No, I'm humbled. It has, has been great. I mean, I've been a Vice Chair before, but it's great to, to follow Jane. And I thank, I thank her for her leadership role. It'll be nice to work with Wilson even more closely than I have been. So thank you.
Look forward to the work, Peter. Thank you, Wendy. And I would point out to the, the board that the nature of the appointment of the Nomination Election Committee, which normally does not happen until our April meeting, this group will remain impaneled as nomination election committee as we proceed to our normal nomination election process, which will, which is scheduled to bring forth nominations in our, at our May meeting and have a vote to fill those vacancies in our June meeting. So, so thank you all. Yeah, yes, Jane.
Wendy, have some more report to give? Charter Commission, maybe?
That will actually occur as, as a nomination from the floor. Yes, we will, we will do that. Thank you. Thank you, Jane. We'll proceed to ad hoc committees and student voice.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Even though you didn't recognize me, I'll just jump right in. I, I continue to be so pleased to, to be a part of the Commissioner's student cabinet. The conversation that students have is just so telling. And I appreciated Heather talking this morning on a teacher's perspective. But there's nothing like hearing it out of the mouth of babes, as they say, about everything that is impacting students' lives under these trying circumstances. So I, I know, Dan, you've participated, but it's just been such an experience that, that I really appreciate being part of. So I, I appreciate that the Commissioner has even created a student, student cabinet. But Casey has been amazing on this student cabinet as well. And I had the opportunity to go into her Zoom room and observe her facilitate a, a group of students. And I, I texted her immediately afterwards because you really did an amazing job, Casey. I, I mean, you know, back in the day, when somebody did a good job, you know, you would often hear, they were eating out of your hands. Like you, you just did such a masterful job of having them open up. And they felt so comfortable talking to you about some really difficult topics. So you deserve a lot of credit for that, Casey. I was very, very impressed. And I never had had the opportunity to watch you in a leadership role like that. So I wanted to say that before I turned it over to you.
Thanks, Wendy. Um, it's really hard to follow that after you just. Um, but yeah, we had a meeting on, I think it was the 27th. And we first did a little advocacy lesson and just like helped the kids out with understanding. You know, so once you've identified the change you want to make, like where do you go from there? Who do you talk to? How does it work? And then we split back up into our little breakout rooms and I got to work with the middle schoolers again. And I think, you know, year after year, we're going to continue to come back to this as a big theme. But a lot of the kids in my group said they wanted to talk about mental health in schools and students who are, you know, they learn in different ways and things like that. And the only other thing I have to note about student voices is that Rachel from the department recently reached out to me and said that NewsCenter is looking into doing a long-term story about students' mental health in Maine, which I think is really cool. And she gave them my name and my information. So I'm really looking forward to being a part of that story, story and sort of drawing more attention to this topic that's really important to me and to a lot of kids on the cabinet. So, yeah.
If I, if I could, Mr. Chair. One thing that one of the students talked about, Casey, that I, I really honestly have never thought about. But there are certain tests, if, I don't know if that's the right word, but that are given to students to assess where they are. And one of your students talked about having some sort of mental health assessment of students at a certain grade level. I thought that was really interesting.
I didn't, I was trying to like draw stuff out of them without just like putting my own like ideas into their brains. But there's one little girl who's in my group who was also on the cabinet last year. And she was always very outspoken about having dyslexia and how that's affected her classroom experience. And how like for years before, you know, she was diagnosed, she just thought she was stupid. She couldn't read. She couldn't keep up with the rest of her classmates. And so we started talking about that. And I, I said to the kids, because this has been like my, my big thing ever since I've started doing this work here with you guys two years ago, was everybody goes like their freshman year and like, you know, every three years before that, and they get their eyes tested and their hearing tested. And, you know, you get, you, it was like the COGATS back in my day. You get tested to see if you would fit in, in a GT setting or a special education setting. And all of this is to assess, you know, where do you fit in in the classroom? But the one thing that I feel like is always left out is where's the assessment for students' mental health? So I just feel that, and a lot of the students reiterated this in the meeting, like if we're going to get our vision and our hearing assessed, we should also have our mental health assessed. Because I feel like my school career would have been much easier if I'd been diagnosed earlier on. And a lot of students reiterated that with other problems.
Thanks, Casey.
Go ahead, ma'am. You've still got the floor.
I have nothing to add other than that. I just wanted Casey to be able to speak about that.
Thank, thank, thank you very much, Wendy. Casey, thank you so, so, so very much for your articulate and passionate expression of, of issues. Are there any questions for student voice folks? Hearing none, we'll move on to student membership, which has become activated as well. And Wendy, would you take the lead on that report?
No, I thought we had designated Fern as the Chair.
Fern, would you take the lead on that report?
That's what I thought.
Absolutely. So Chair Hess assigned the Student Membership Ad Hoc Committee back a few weeks ago. And we met on January 25th. And by we, I mean Wendy and our senior student rep, Casey. And I met and we mapped out the process for this year. Applications are being accepted at this time. They were accepted from February 1st all the way to March 1st. They will continue being accepted. And in this year, we're looking at replacing Casey, who represents Congressional District 1. And so the guidance counselors and principals for all high schools in District 1 have received all the materials inviting their current sophomores to apply to become a student rep on our board during their junior and senior year. The application materials are also available on the State Board of Education website. And as I mentioned, Mary, all the way back at the beginning of the month, emailed all materials as well to the principals and guidance counselors. So we will be looking at reviewing those applications. The timeframe we have decided for ourselves, the committee will review applications on March 8th, 11th and 16th as needed. And then we will invite the semifinalists for an interview. Those interviews will take place on March 29th. And then the committee will get back together on March 30th and make a decision on the three names that we will send along to the governor. These finalists will have their applications sent to the governor. And the governor will select one of the three students whose names we will forward. And they will go in front of the Education and Cultural Affairs Committee for confirmation and a confirmation by the, a hearing by the Education and Cultural Affairs Committee and a confirmation by the Maine State Senate, which again, we, our work will be done, we anticipate, by March 30th. And afterwards, it's in the hands of the governors. And so not sure when that's going to take place, the other events. That's our, our plan. We're up and running. Peter?
Yeah, we just want to make sure that this, this person gets confirmed. This is a longer session. Last year, we had a late start and the session ended. And we've had this situation where somebody hasn't been confirmed until now. And so we really want to make sure that when we get it to the governor, that there is an urgency to, to picking the person and getting it, getting that he or she, he or she or he confirmed while this session, while the legislature is in session.
I fully understand what you're saying and the concerns you would have. And last year, our committee thought we were right on track because when we had a luncheon with the Education and Cultural Affairs Committee, I had questioned at that time if we had our names to the governor by the, at the end of March, which is what our schedule is at this time, would we be all set? And we were assured at that time that we'd be all set. I think you were part of that luncheon as well. But then COVID hit and then things did not happen. So it was very unfortunate and I really appreciate your, your, your concern over making sure that we do have that student confirmed at an appropriate time, you know, in advance so that they can be with us on time.
If, if I may, you know, just to further clarify, it, it, it wasn't the confirmation process. It was the actual appointment process before the, the, the Board of Commissions, where we, and I think they were involved in, in lots of COVID stuff. The, the personnel there were involved in lots of COVID stuff. But that, that education process will need to continue as we move forward. And Fern, you and Peter are both right that, you know, we're, we're, I think, going to be more alert to husbanding through that process this time. So, well said. Anything further for Fern or her colleagues? Again, thank you all for, for, for getting on task and giving, getting everything out in such a timely fashion. We'll proceed to special reports. And with a drum roll, we'll ask for a report from our Charter Commission representatives. And I'll turn, as I always do, to Jane, to Jana, sorry.
Thank you, Wilson. I'll review just a few things that I mentioned earlier, that we did have our first, actually, we had our first monthly meeting with our new Executive Director, Jeremy Jones. But most of us had been online, had gone into the Zoom a few days earlier to see him report out to the Education and Cultural Affairs Committee. I think he did a wonderful job. So I was extremely, we were very, very happy with him. And I think he's looking forward to come here to Maine. Also, we handed out our annual report. I'm going to just put it up this way. This is what's going to be coming to all of you. It's about a 27-page report. And it is, it's, it's an update on all of our schools for the year. It goes first to its father, Department of Education, and directly to Penda, to the Commissioner. And then it goes to Education and Cultural Affairs. And another copy will come to each one of you so that you will be able to read it at some time at your own leisure.
I was looking for it when I got.
We accepted, our, one of our virtual schools is required to do a third-party evaluation that has become extremely helpful to them. And we received that report and tremendous progress has been made with this virtual academy, Maine Virtual Academy. We had three, excuse me, I'm sorry if you're hearing a voice in the background. I can't do anything about it right now. We had mid-year check-ins with the Maine Virtual, Maine Arts Academy. And a few of our other schools have, and again, this is an update. And again, this is another way that we check in all the time with various things that we look for in our reviews to see that our schools are performing as they have said that they will do under their charters. So it's a very, very good way that we, I think, that we have as a constant check-in and keeping on top of everything. We had all our lotteries set for the month of March. So all nine of our schools will have a lottery sometime during March. Most of our schools have waiting lists. One or two do not, but for the most part, they all do. Obviously, you know that our virtual schools have the lot, highest number. And they're in the 250 to 300. And they're in that 250 to 300 range of students on that list. We've also reviewed, which I think is rather interesting. We're gonna look at it more next month, a system called SIS. And it's a Common Unified Student Information System. And it coordinates more of the things that go directly to the state. And they can go into one file that we will be keeping and that we can then access without having to call a school, asking them to resend information to me, which they also have to be sending on to the state as well. It'll free up our schools from a lot of extra work that they've had to do. But we'll be reviewing that more next month. I think that's all I have and I'd like to just ask Fern or John if there's anything else that they would like to add to this report.
I, I just, yes, I would just underscore something you've already said, the annual report. Over the years, we've really worked hard on getting this thing to really be descriptive of what we do and how we do it. And, and the emphasis in the report really is the, is the accountability we hold our, our member schools to. And i- if anybody has any doubt as to accountability for the charter school world, take a look at that report. It's, it's very evident what, what goes on within and among these now 10 member schools. And I, we on the commission commended the staff on the excellent work they've done putting this year's report together. Because it really reflects growth in making this report better every year. And I don't know how it can get better than it is this year. It just, it really is terrific. So, and just to underscore also what you've already said, Jeremy Jones is a great addition to Maine and to the charter school leadership world. And we look forward to, to his, having his, making his impact felt as he is able to be here physically and, and spend more time among us. Fern has her hand up.
Just very briefly, John, I'm so glad you brought up the accountability factor that exists in our charter schools. That is, to me, above and beyond what we would expect many of the schools to be doing. And they do it well. And I echo all of the sentiments you just expressed about that accountability situation. So thank you, John.
Very good. Anything further? The Charter Commission Representatives. Jane, I'm sure, or Jenna, I'm sure people are going to, going to, going to speak to this later today. But during my tenure on the, on the board, you, you, you've been the heart and soul of, of the group that's been with the Charter Commission. And your, your knowledge of, of that, your commitment to that, your passion for that has, has been extraordinary. You are, you're, you're, you're going to leave shoes that are all but impossible to fill. But know that you do that with the thanks from all of us for the great, great work that you've, you've done there and other places on the board as well.
Oh, I, I just have to say, Wilson, that every time a new member has come on to the Charter Commission, I just thought, we can't get any better. And this goes way back to the very beginning. And every time a, a new member would come on, it just got better and better and better. And everyone has brought a great deal of knowledge in their field to bring to us to help to make us even better. They haven't all been in education. Some have been in business, but it's just broadened everything that we've been able to do. And I'm gonna just piggyback quick on what John said about the report. Please read the report. What, when he talked about the accountability, there is no kidding about it. Every single area that we judge our schools in, that either exceed, they meet expectations, or they don't. It's all listed. You see every single one of them. You know whether they're performing as they should or there are things that they need to work on. So it's only 27 pages and you know you get more stuff than that to read. So please, when it comes to you, take a couple of minutes or an hour or so and, and just read it. Because you'll see the accountability is all there for our schools. And thank you, Wilson. I'm gonna, I'm gonna miss, but I can't let go. You know that. So I, I'm still gonna find ways to be working with the Charter Commission. May not be, may not be the appointed one, but there may be a few others that will, I'll find my way to. So thanks so much. I've loved everything I've done. I've learned so much myself. And I think the biggest thing for me has always been choice, that children in Maine have choice and their families have choice. And our charter schools are giving them that opportunity to do that. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Well said, as always. We turn now to report of our Professional Standards Board Representative, Peter.
Well, I can't take up as much time because we didn't meet this month. I think the next meeting of, of the Professional Standards Board is March 1st, I believe. And up until this point, this is a 23-member appointed by the Governor panel of educators. And we, up until this point, have looked at and endorsed many of the, the Chapter 115 rules and kind of looked at it bits and pieces. But they, they, this is a particular group that has looked at the 115, but their, their purpose is to advise the State Board on a number of issues. So the next meeting is going to be March 1st and there was none in the past month. It's not even a monthly, it's not a group that meets monthly, by the way. It's a group that has to meet at least five times a year and that we've done.
Very, very well said. Thank you, Peter. Questions for Peter? Okay, thank you very much. We will proceed to old business. Excuse me. My computer is desirous of, of energy. We'll proceed to old business. The, the matter of Chapter 115 was tabled to this time. It is my anticipation, from what we've heard from the Certification of Higher Education Committee, that it would be in order to entertain a motion to table consideration of Rule Chapter 115 until the March meeting. The board, the chair would, would, would be, would entertain a motion to that effect.
Second it.
By John Bird and Jane Sexton. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Mary, would you call the roll, please?
Wilson has.
Aye.
Jane Sexton?
Yes.
Wendy Alt?
Yes.
John Bird?
Yes.
Fern Dischattens?
Yes.
Peter Geiger?
Yes.
Martha Harris?
Yes.
Daniel LaPointe?
Yes.
The vote being unanimous among those present in voting, the motion carries. The item is tabled until March 15th with, with hope that we'll be able to take action on it at that time. Is that correct, Dan? Dan's just smiling.
Yes. Finger crump.
We'll proceed to new business. The first item of new business relates to the quarterly report for the Carl D. Perkins Grant. And the chair would entertain a motion relating to that.
Yes, which we do every quarter. The State Board of Education, or I recommend that the State Board of Education approve the quarterly report for the period of October 1, 2020 through December 31, 2020 of the State of Maine Plan for Strengthening Career Technical Education for the 21st Century Act, PL 115-224.
Is there a second? Janet LaPointe, as the second, is there discussion?
And we have a balance in that, in, in, in that quarterly report of about $175,000 and change. So things are right, right on track.
Very good. Further questions or comments? I'd ask Mary to call the roll.
Wilson has.
Aye.
Jane Sexton?
Yes.
Wendy Alt?
Yes.
John Bird?
Yes.
Fern Dischattens?
Yes.
Peter Geiger?
Yes.
Martha Harris?
Yes.
Daniel LaPointe?
Yes.
The vote being unanimous among those present in voting, the motion is carried. Thank you all very much. We move to Item B, which relates to the Integrated Consolidated 9 through 16 Educational Facility Approved Projects List for the 27, 2018 Rating Cycle. Martha, are you reporting on behalf of the committee?
Yes, I would make the motion first that the State Board approved the removal of Project 1 Valley Unified Education Service Center from the Integrated Consolidated 916 Educational Facilities Approved Project List for the 2017, 2018 Rating Cycle.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
So there, the exhibit that you have before you that was drafted and sent by Wilson sort of gives the history behind this. And people will recall that there was a deadline set of December 31st for them to see if they could get their organization done. And that did not happen. And we got at least one letter from one of the four units that said they were not going to be able to get this done. The committee, Construction Committee dealt with this on several occasions, but the last one on January 29th. And unanimously agreed that this removal was appropriate. If people have questions, we can certainly answer them.
Questions for the committee? Hearing none. Mary, please call the roll.
Wilson has.
Abstain.
Jane Sexton?
Yes.
Peter Geiger?
Yes.
Fern Dischattens?
I'm so, I'm sorry, yes.
John Bird?
Yes.
Wendy Alt?
Yes.
Martha Harris?
Yes.
Daniel LaPointe?
Yes.
The vote being 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, in favor with one abstention, the motion carries and is a so-order. We will proceed to the next item of business, which is on behalf of the vacancy, pending vacancy in the School Charter Commission. The, the chair would, would entertain motions to replace the pending vacancy in the School Charter Commission.
I have my hand up.
It's okay. We're both gonna do the same thing.
I had it up first, though.
That's all right. You go ahead. I thought you'd give me that privilege since I've been on the line.
We can't do it together, but you can, go, you make it, I'll second it. Go ahead.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to have Wilson has be our appointee to the Charter Commission.
I second.
Okay.
Are there any other nominations?
No, I was gonna say the one I called it, did they?
I understand a conspiracy when I see one. Please call the roll, Mary.
Do you, does, does the?
Jane Sexton?
Yes.
Wendy Alt?
Yes.
Yes.
Fern Dischattens?
Yes.
Peter Geiger?
Yes.
Martha Harris?
Yes.
Daniel LaPointe?
Yes, enthusiastically, yes.
The, the, the vote being unanimous among those present in voting, the motion carries. I would make an observation. Jenna, you have, you've put me in a position of violating one of my cardinal principles, which is never to follow a class act. Thank you. I'll do my best to be a successor, but certainly not a replacement for Jenna. Is there any other new business to come before the State Board? Hearing none, I will call your attention to the issue of, of account vouchers. I would open the floor for any other announcements or testimonials. I do wish to serve notice that I've been called to the Education and Cultural Affairs Committee meeting for the nomination of James Ford. So I will simply say, you know, both to Jane and, and to Jenna again, you know, you're, you're, you're both class acts. And I will, I, I will share with you the lead ditty to a song from our youth that I, I hope sums it up. It's a song that was made famous by Roy Rogers and Dale Evans. And the lead in is "Some Trails Are Happy Ones, Others Are Blue." It's the way you ride the trail that counts. Boy, it's been a pleasure riding the trail with the both of you. So, so thank you very much. Jane, I'm gonna have to turn the chair to, the chair to you. And, and I'll, I assume by the time I'm off with these other folks, you all will be adjourned. So with, with apologies to everyone, I'm gonna go mute and step out to Educational and Cultural Affairs. Thank you.
Thank you, Wilson. John, other than waving goodbye, is there anything else? Is there any other points? Then I see the meeting adjourned. Thank you all. All right, sorry.
I, I was just gonna say before we call it a day that even though I'm leaving, I just want you all to know, you'll still get your Christmas card from me. And maybe this year I'll beat Peter Geiger, but nobody beats that man from getting it out so early. I don't know how you do it, Peter.
I can't beat you in volume, however. I, I just want to say, I, I served on the board from 92 to 97, from 2012 to 17. And some of my dearest friends are people that are on the State Board of Education. It's partly because of the passion that everybody has, you know, Martha, Jenna, Jane, and everybody else. You know, and, and Jenna, I, I got out in 92. This, the Charter, Charter movement started in 91 in Minnesota. And during those first few years through NASB, I attended a lot of conferences on it. There was a lot of legis, potential legislation in Maine. And I'm kind of glad we waited, even though I was supporting it back then, really have done it right. And that's because of the effort that you and others have put into it. I mean, during the early days, dog labor is what you did. And, and it's, it's a good, good movement and I think you've served it well. So thank you. And Jane, your dear friend, and thank you too for, for, for everything. And I remember when you joined the board, Nancy Perkins told me, you know, how fortunate we were to have you. And we have been fortunate. And I don't know that we're saying goodbye to anybody else today, so I'll reserve myself for just you two. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Fern? You know, there's so much I'd want to say and I definitely want to say something, but I, how do I cover what I, you know, what's in my mind? And I'm, you know, this isn't, I'm not so sure. I know that Jenna and Jane, that confirmation will not, their hearings are being held today with the Education and Cultural Affairs Committee. We don't know when the Senate's gonna confirm. And, and I'm not sure when Martha's leaving and I'm not sure what's happening with John either. So I'm gonna focus on Jane and Jenna, hoping that Martha and John are here next month. I, I, I really hope that's the case. But, you know, for Jenna and Jane, the two of you, you know, none are more committed to education than the two of you in everything that you do, your heart and soul. As Wilson said earlier, your heart and soul is into education. You have a passion for education. And that has been shown through your work with the State Board and the committees you've served on. I'm going to just straight to Jenna and say, you know, Maine Charter School Commission.
And I'm going to just straight to Jenna and say, you know, Maine Charter School Commission, they're losing, you know, the backbone of charter schools in Maine because you understand and have the knowledge for charter schools like no one else on the commission. Whenever I have a question, I know that you have the answer. And I appreciate everything you've brought to the commission. You will be so missed, so missed. And I'm not going to follow behind you in reporting to the State Board because as, as Wilson pointed out, when you follow behind someone who does an outstanding job, you're not in a good position. So I'm going to let someone else report to the State Board. You've been just doing a marvelous job with the Charter Commission. But both of you, you've been extremely, when I came on the State Board, I believe I'm the youngest still, the member of the State Board. Because even though Peter came in this time after I did, you already had served two terms. So as the youngest member, both of you were very warm and welcoming to me. And I, I truly appreciated the knowledge and the many times that you were open to my questioning you on any matter having to do with the work of the State Board. And just very, very, you know, making me feel like a friend and that I could really open up and, and ask you anything that I wanted. So thank you for being so welcoming to me on the board. I have the utmost, utmost respect and admiration for both of you. You're, you're wonderful. I will certainly miss you. You're very, and I hope both of you will stay connected and that you will be able to continue sharing your many years of wisdom with me, whether it is with State Board or committee work, or any of the ways that we've interacted before. And I know with certification and higher ed, both of you have given so much of your time to that committee. You've seen the different revisions to Chapter 115 and 125. And, you know, you've just been patient throughout the whole thing and just helped all of us find our way, maneuver ourselves through certification and higher ed issues. Thank you for all you've done, for all the committee work, the State Board work, and for just being good friends. And I hope that we can continue keeping open communications. Thank you.
Thank you, Fern. Wendy?
Thanks, Jane. There isn't much I can add to what has already been said, but, you know, I just have so appreciated both of you. And thank you for everything that you've done. And I know you're only a phone call away, so I appreciate that too. Thanks.
Thank you, everyone. Anything else? Again, I will say thank you for everyone and good luck. And we'll have the meeting adjourned then. Thank you.
So you, bye.
You don't need a motion to adjourn?
Okay.
I think the chair can adjourn.
Okay. Thank you.
Good day, everybody.
Bye.
Bye-bye.